Did it get started?
I don't, I don't actually see her, Joe.
Yeah, I see her. She's hiding in the corner.
I am. I'm ready, whatever you are. I'm just gonna move, Joe, okay?
No problem. Good evening, Colton Moore. Order meeting number seventeen ninety-seven of the Planning and Zoning Commission at six thirty-one PM. We have a core, we have four regular members and one alternate. Frank, I'm gonna ask you to join into the discussions tonight kindly. Are there any added agenda items?
Mr. Chairman, this is Clark, and at the last meeting, we had an informal discussion about drive-throughs in the highway interchange zone. And after subsequent discussions between Mike and myself and Tim Kuhn from JR Russo, we discovered a number of things that led to additional questions, so we're hoping we could bring those to your attention. Whatever point in the meeting you feel is appropriate.
Well, we have a business meeting at the end of the, at the end of the agenda. Is it okay we discuss it there?
That would be great, thank you.
Okay. Is the applicant gonna be with us, or just an informal conversation with staff?
I believe the applicant is planning on listening in.
Okay. Okay. You think we need to add a formal motion to include that under our business meeting?
That's always a good idea.
Yeah, okay. Can someone offer a motion to add to our agenda under our business meeting?
I'll move to add a discussion on the zoning regs and drive-throughs under the business meeting.
There's a motion on the table, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Unanimous, okay, we'll talk about that then, thank you. Next up, legal notices, there was one. East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a regular meeting on Tuesday, February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, at six thirty PM via the remote Zoom, excuse me, remote video conferencing platform Zoom. Application for Shea's Hospitality in one twenty-two Prospect Hill Road for a special use permit for alcohol sales. An inventory of beer and wine will be kept on stock to complement, to complement specialty pairings, gift baskets in boxes. A full copy of the application is available on the town clerk's webpage, the Planning and Zoning Commission's webpage on the town website. All interested persons may attend the online meeting and public hearing to be heard. This appeared on the Journal Inquirer on February eleventh, twenty-twenty-one, as well as February eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Yes, excuse me, I'm losing my voice, although I feel fine. Next up, approval of minutes, February ninth, twenty-twenty-one. Any comments, edits? To the minutes.
I have no comments or edits, I think they're good. Did you want to do public participation first?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Well, let's put that in plus. This happened once before, a couple meetings ago. I apologize for those waiting in the audience. So this is the public participation portion of our meeting. Are there any, any comments in the audience for something that's not already on tonight's agenda? Any comments? Okay, I'll take that as the no. We'll go back to approval of minutes, February ninth, twenty-twenty-one. Someone would like to offer a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of regular meeting one seven nine six, which was held February ninth, twenty-twenty-one.
There's a motion on the table for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, say aye or raise your hand. I'm an aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Next up, receipt of applications, there is one. Yolanda Montalvo, I apologize if I mispronounced that. Special use permit application for nail salon to be located at one forty-eight North Road, Unit Three. This would be heard at a future agenda. Next up, under new public hearings, Shea Hospitality for a special use permit application for the sale of alcohol at one twenty-two Prospect Hill Road. Who's here for that tonight?
Good evening, I'm Attorney Julie Diallessi-Lafley, I'm representing Shea Hospitality Group and Mark Sparks, who is, from my view, next to me, but he is here this evening as well.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
So, can you just give a brief explanation?
Sure, thank you, it's awkward on Zoom, so I appreciate that, thank you. So Shea Hospitality Group has applied for a special use permit for the location at the one twenty-two Prospect Hill Road. That is a Zone B two location, and as you had stated when discussing the agenda, the business operation is going to be one where there is a catering and onsite meals pickup delivery service. And part of the catering function would be to provide bottles of wine or beer to enhance either gift baskets or meals that would be picked up to go off-premise. We anticipate, in terms of volume, the anticipated opening hopefully is March seventeenth of this year, and that's what we're targeting. Naturally, there would be no sales if the license was not approved by that time, but when we are at our functioning level, we would expect to have approximately twenty-five to thirty customers throughout the course of the day. That's the initial anticipated traffic, if you will, or flow in and out of that location. Hours of operation during the week would be, are targeted to be ten AM to eight PM, with the highest number of customers coming in during the lunch and the dinner hours, and we expect that to be approximately a two to three hour window. So we would be open for, you know, some retail service in the day, but most of it would have been pre-planned pickup and delivery of meals that have been prepared in advance. Saturdays and Sundays, we would expect comparable patronage and number of customers coming in, although the anticipation is that the hours of operation would be slightly less, probably eleven AM to seven PM, and we would adjust those based on demand. It's our opinion, our belief, that it's a complimentary to the businesses and to the businesses that are in that plaza. In fact, our landlord has provided an email to the zoning board that is asked to be read into the record in support of the, of the application for a special permit for this particular use. So I can go on about my client who has been in the catering and hospitality industry for, I'm sorry to tell you, about thirty years, he's grown up in this industry. He holds catering licenses and a common Victoroller license in the state of Massachusetts without issue, and has been operating the, a similar kind of meals and pickup service with catering and specialty baskets in Massachusetts as well, under a similar format. So in regard to, to, you know, our belief that although this is not automatically, you know, covered or allowed under the zoning of for B two, it is unlikely to cause any harm to any of the existing commercial tenants and businesses that are in that plaza. There's likely to be a minimal amount of traffic in terms of customers coming in and out, that it would unlikely place any demand on the neighborhood as well, so we're asking that the application be approved so we can move forward. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And we'll start with you, do you have any questions for Julie or Mark?
Um, I guess curiosity questions, this is the old friendlies?
Yes, it is.
And post-COVID, when hopefully the world goes back to normal, would you consider sit-down use as a eat-in restaurant, or will this stay catering only?
So I think that it is anticipated that this room would remain catering only. The build-out is to create office space and commissary space within that location and really to set it up for quick, I'm gonna do a quick service in and out, picking up of the meals already prepared.
Okay, that's my questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Frank, how about you?
I don't have any questions as presented, I think she did a sufficient job for me.
Thank you. Michael Zowski?
Just one question, so is the alcohol gonna be an on-shelf item, or is it gonna be strictly included in some type of a food basket?
So it's part of the basket itself. So for example, if you were to get a Super Bowl package and you wanted a craft beer to go with whatever platters or other things you ordered, it would be an enhancer, an add-on. It wouldn't, it would be part of the wine, the basket itself, or the beer package itself.
So no one could be able to just walk in and solely purchase a bottle of wine?
That is not what's anticipated, Mark, you wanna confirm that is not?
Sure, so it would really be in, in addition to purchasing a meal, and it would be packaged as a box or a basket, as written in the, in the new application.
So we're not anticipating having coolers full of craft beers, or having coolers filled with, or, you know, racks of wine for products to be sold at a retail level, if you will. It's specifically to be included as part of the package that's put together.
More of a pairing, I would call it.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, how about you?
I had the same question that Mike had, I'm just glad to see that property is finally getting somebody in there that they're sitting for all these years.
That's true, the only comment I had, I'm just very thrilled that there's someone interested in that piece of property.
Thank you, we're, we're expecting to do great things, we've had a real positive reception in Connecticut, and this particular format has done well in Massachusetts, and we're right up over the border, I'm not sure if you're familiar with Shea Joseph, but we've been doing Shea's meals to go there as well, and Mark has done a very, you know, very, very good job in terms of promoting it in a, in a really incredibly positively receptive way, so people are really happy with the product, no surprise.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, does anyone from the audience have any comments or questions? No comments? Okay. Well, I see Clark, you prepared a staff memo for us. Anything over and above, what's written there that we should know about? Any other concerns you might have?
No, none. I viewed the application just as it was presented this evening, and I have, personally have no issues with it, personally or as a town planner.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess my only question is, moving forward here, you know, obviously we need to close the public hearing and take action. Do we actually have a motion for approval? Is that hidden somewhere that I'm not seeing, is it in another document?
We, we weren't really expecting you to close the public hearing and take action tonight, but I'm sure between Mike and me, if that's your pleasure, we can come up with a motion.
Are we asking a lot in the next few minutes for you guys to craft something?
No, I'm happy to delegate it to Mike.
Yeah, if you, if you just want to, if you wanna close it, and I guess maybe move it to further down on the agenda to give me a chance to just workshop something that'll give me a few minutes to throw something in there, but this is, should be fairly simple.
Okay, so with the order of business here, we'll, we'll make a motion to close the public hearing. We'll move on to our next item on the agenda, then we'll circle back, and we'll see what you have, if you're ready for us.
So just, yeah, make, make them, make sure we get a motion to add it to the agenda, because we didn't, and then I will get typing.
Okay. Mike, for clarity, I guess I'm not following you for an emotion on the agenda, to add it somewhere else on the agenda, or just to come back to it?
Yeah, because you, you can't take action during the hearing, so if you close the hearing under nine, then you probably want to add it to eleven as new business for decision. And if you add it, let's say as, you know, B, by the time you get through the POCD implementation discussion, I'll have something prepared.
Thank you. Okay. So any final comments from any board members or any members of the audience before we consider closing the public hearing for this one? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move to close the public hearing on application PZ twenty-twenty-one dash three for a special use permit for sale of alcohol at one twenty-two Prospect Hill Road, map one twelve, block seventeen, lot one A dash zero one, which is a B two zone. The applicant is Shea Hospitality.
There's a motion on the table to close the public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Here are none, I'll call, go ahead, Dan.
Do you want the motion to also contain moving it on the agenda, or do you want to take that up as a second?
I was gonna just take that up right after we take a vote.
Okay.
So no further discussion, or a call for votes, in favor, say aye, or raise their hand?
Aye.
Aye. A public hearing is closed. Okay, to give Mike the modest some time, so can we entertain a motion to add a new item to the agenda under new business item B to discuss the condition, the application and conditions of approval for Shea's Hospitality later in the agenda?
I will move to add to the agenda under section eleven, a new B to continue discussion and potentially act on application PZ twenty-twenty-one dash oh three for a special use permit for sale of alcohol at one twenty-two Prospect Hill Road, which is map one twelve, block seventeen, lot one A dash oh one, a B two zone. The applicant is Shea Hospitality.
There's a motion to add a new item under new business, is there a second?
Second.
Aye.
Second by Commissioner Gowdy, any discussion or any concerns? Here are none, I call for votes, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So Julie and Mark, maybe after we, after we hear the next item, we can re-discuss your application, and hopefully you can get a vote tonight.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up, item ten, under old business. It's my understanding that the applicant has requested to continue this to March ninth. So with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to continue this application, review this application.
I'll move to continue the application called PZ twenty-twenty dash nineteen, one ninety-eight South Main Street, map twenty-two, block five, lot seventy-nine. It's site plan application for demolition of an existing house and construction of a ninety-six hundred square foot building and parking lot for an automobile workshop in a B two zone. It would be continued until March ninth, twenty-twenty-one, at our Zoom meeting at six thirty PM.
There is a motion to continue the application for one ninety-eight South Main Street until our March ninth, twenty-twenty-one meeting, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Here are none, I call for votes, in favor, say aye, raise their hand?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Thank you. Next up, under new business, POCD implementation presentation by Ruthie and Calabria.
Hello.
Hi, it's been a while.
Yes, it has been. So, I'm gonna share my screen. Screen two, can you see it?
Yeah.
Gotta click the share button.
Yes.
Okay, good. So, I'm here tonight because whilst staffing the Economic Development Commission, they had an item on their agenda to review the plan of conservation and development and pick some items in their action items and try and prioritize them for items to move forward. And so I went on thinking it might would be helpful, read through the plans, came through, see where action items were tagged for EDC, and realized just how comprehensive and numerous the action items were, so I was thinking, you know, these plans get renewed every ten years, and we were halfway, so it was a good opportunity to take a peek and see where we're at. So what I wanted to do was just give a brief overview, you know, the vision for the future, really wanting to have East Windsor being an attractive place to live and work, and and that takes some preservation of the things that make East Windsor special, the rural character, the villages, agriculture, and business. And so these, these are, you know, this is the vision from the POCD, really wanting to be careful in how we're guiding development, to make sure that we're keeping that character that we want, and being prepared for future growth and aging population, and then of course, having all those services available to our residents, so that we require economic development to provide for those services and jobs, and we want to do that in a thoughtful way, maintaining our environment and quality of life. So to do that, in the plan, there are twenty-seven primary strategies that can get bucketed into these three areas, conserving community resources, guiding development and meeting infrastructure needs. So these twenty-seven primary strategies have in total ninety-seven action items. And so here we are halfway, and we have about twenty-five percent of those items have been either completed, or they're ongoing type items, or they've been touched in some way. And notable accomplishments, I've listed a few here, where we open space, looking to preserve our community assets, we do have the fee in lieu of open space and have purchased property. Ry Street and East Road Farmland. Marketing initiatives just recently launched is the real estate portfolio online. The EDC website is, is the bones of it have been created, we're taking a look at it to see how we can launch that. We have gravel pit solar, we have renewable energy on our list of action items. And then park and recreation, getting the athletics to take place on town properties. East Windsor Park improvements, and then restructuring our business, so we can see we've touched on services and business development as well as open space. So I had noted before that there's ninety-seven action items. The first action item in the plan is to have an implementation and oversight committee. And that has not been initiated, given that we're halfway through the tenure cycle, and we have about twenty-five of those items have been touched upon. It seems like now's a good time to maybe launch an oversight function. In the plan itself, this is what is listed, is what it would look like, with the leads being this commission and the Board of Selectmen, and the committee would be made up of members from various boards. Town Planner, Town Engineer. The checklist that's in the appendix of the report that has those ninety-seven action items would be utilized to track and to you know, kind of have discussions with sponsors for those action items, so that there are deliverables and deadlines, and then we could come back and report progress and reflect that in the plan of conservation, as we're, as we're achieving what we had set out to do. So again, it's kind of reiterates what I just said. This was my cheat sheet to figure out the twenty-five percent number of action items per the twenty-seven primary strategies, and where we have them, where we've made progress. So this is just a quick and dirty look at all the action items. And in here, this, this table basically is a list and potential sponsors who would be involved in seeing these actions, items pulled out. Like to share with you a this over. I was on South Windsor's site today, and they have a pretty formalized process. This speaker. When they report back to their Planning and Zoning Commission, they go by action item, it's broken down by sections of their plan. No, no accident that I picked three in our conversations today. So as they complete, they, what they do is they prioritize the action items, put a lead on it, get partners, and keep track of progress, and then when it's complete, they're showing that as well. And when they complete items, they actually update their report amended by the effective dates that they've written a new portion into the zoning regs or whatnot. So I, I kind of like that, and that's up for discussion there. I guess the, the request really is can we kick off an implementation committee? We wanted to come to you first, we are on the agenda for the Board of Selectmen. So I'd like to be able to incorporate this group's, this commission's take on which way we go next. Got some comments?
I really like what, what you have presented, and I keep a little cheat sheet of things that that's been going now for a couple years, things we need to come back to, and this was definitely one of them. And for whatever reason, it just getting, being pushed aside, and a lot of that had to do with the change in priorities. the change in priorities at the Selectmen level as well as our change in local town staff. You know, we've had three planner while now hopefully has some continuity with Clark. And we can really dig our feet in, in what yourself and other staff members, we can really start moving forward here. But I, I, I fully support this and I and I, I like to volunteer and help in any way I can. And I think that having this tracking sheet and maybe once a month, you know, we try to tackle something. So, we can show some signs moving forward would be a good idea. Initially, our planning and zoning meetings were scheduled where the second week, excuse me, the second meeting of every month was a workshop to talk about the work on planning, zoning issues or something such as this. And if we were to get back to that, I think that would do a long way of kind of moving or shepherding this along in the process.
Okay.
I, I, I guess the, the, the one, one concern I do have is many boards and commissions are filled with volunteers and I just reading some of the minutes of the recent Board of Selectmen or not the minutes, but actually just the, the Zoom conversations, there's just not enough volunteers out there. And a lot of this is, is based on volunteers and you know, we are, we ourselves are short. A couple of volunteers in, in this board. So, I think maybe we can get back to full strength. I think there'll be some additional minds we can put to good use to help us accomplish all our goals.
Joe, I just put in my application as a regular.
Terrific Frank.
Thanks.
So, we still have three vacancies e- even after you do that. So.
That's assuming I get on.
But nonetheless, Ruthanne, you know, did, you know, make it easy on yourself. There's no need to recreate the wheel regarding, regarding having a tracking implementation, creating a matrix, whatever. It looks like you've already got great bones here.
Yeah.
You know, borrowing from another town is nothing to be ashamed.
I'm not. I saw this today and I'm like, ooh, I'm jealous.
Yes.
I'm taking it.
You might be able to call them over there and get a blank spreadsheet to work from.
I know this, well, it's got me able to edit it. So, be playing with it. Yeah.
So, I, I don't want to be the only one talking here. Is anyone else in the commission have a, any other thoughts or different thoughts?
Joe, this is Frank. I agree with you 100%. I can remember years back, we spent more time on planning than we did on zoning. And it seems like in recent years, we've been doing nothing with zoning and not much planning. And I think that's not the way to go. I think you hit it right on the head. We ought to, we ought to spend more time on planning.
And, and this is just one component of it. I know Mike D'Amato put the whole laundry list of things together. I don't know if he put pen and paper where he's got it in the back of his mind of all things that are are kind of need to be tweaked in our zoning regs, subdivision regs. I mean, we have a lot of potential work to be doing, you know, just to better serve the community. A little more clarity for all of us when we turn our face to make an informed decision.
And I think Joe, this dovetails nicely with the commissions. Hopefully soon, you know, to consider what to do with the warehouse point study. Because all that work will be done in conjunction with this and we'll need to align. So, it's a really good time to be thinking about all of this big picture stuff.
Okay.
Joe, I think what Ruthanne has done is incredible. I totally support moving forward. My one concern is when I think about, let's say 50 plus items or 75, however many it is that we haven't focused on. I think of just in general workload and limited staff we have available and see massive reg rewrites ahead. I'm wondering if one of the steps might be to prioritize things and see if there's added resources in the form of consultants, we could apply to or contract out some of the reg rewriting. So, I just think, you know, first you need priorities and then you need to apply your staff to what you can get done and then see if we can apply added resources.
I agree.
That's, yep, that's a possibility. Absolutely.
Mike, are you talking to us?
No, I'm workshopping the motion.
Okay, your mouth is moving while you're reading.
So, i- is that something that Ruthanne, that you could help us prioritize? Maybe create a list of, in your opinion, maybe the top 10. And at a future meeting, we, we all, we, we could go through that top 10 list.
Yeah.
And maybe we could pick the top five or something, you know, it's, it's you know, sometimes these small accomplishments, accomplishments are big wins to show us some progress. So, even if we have an easy one on the list that we just knock off, well, you know, it just shows forward progress, gives us a little bit of momentum.
Yeah, I think so. I, we do a lot of putting our heads together in the office. And what I liked about how East Windsor organized their action items, they gave it, you know, short, medium and long term timeframes, which I equated to priorities. And in our conversation even just today, it was first stop is to prioritize, to take this list of things to do and somehow sort them that way. So, yeah, and I think if we did that ahead of time, you could either validate or tweak or, you know, that makes sense.
And I guess we also had need to be sensitive regarding the economics. Let's say that there, there's a short term strategy that, that should be prioritized, but at the same time, we don't have the staff resources immediately. And you don't want that to be a big time suck considering everything else that's going on too. So, although it's a, it's a high priority, short duration, maybe we need to kind of move that to the back of the list because you know, this is not really the right economic time to be asking for a lot of consultant help. Maybe there's some small things that we might be asked for, but if it's, if it's, if it's a big ticket item, I, I, I see us get a little bit of pushback.
I guess I would also say I would look for quick wins, but I'd also look for things that really stand in the way of progress. If there are things that we, even if it's a big undertaking, if it can fix something so we can get the development pattern we really want and allow something really good for the town to happen. Maybe that should be prioritized too.
Yeah.
Ruthanne, anywhere in the POCD does it talk about advancements to technology? Is that mentioned anywhere in here? Technology for like as a planning tool like GIS to help us get to the goals we want, you know, sometimes, you know.
Yeah. I don't remember seeing it, but I'll screen it again with that in mind.
Jim or Mike, do you have any comments, questions?
Just, just having consistent staff will be a big game changer.
I agree.
And I, and I hope someday we can get back to in-person meetings. I think you're there more productive too.
Amen.
All right. So, in a month, put it back on the agenda. Is that what they, it took me? We'll have our prioritize list for your review.
That sounds fine. And what, no, obviously, you know, if, I don't know with the exact amount, we should prioritize whether it's five or 10, you know, pick many more than that. So, we, we have an opportunity to debate some of these things, elevate a few, drop a few down. Because sometimes it does make sense to not, maybe not take the number one priority for whatever reason, maybe to some of the things that Ann was talking about.
Right. So, yeah. Put it in tears.
Joe, you had mentioned your willingness to help in this regard and it occurs to me that some of the discussion on prioritization is, should definitely include the implementation committee. Are you giving us permission and Jay might be listening again to put your name up for, to serve as a member of the implementation committee?
Yes, yeah, sure. I do a lot of this in my, my nine to five job.
Well, thank you.
Implementation and, you know, so this, this falls right into my cup of tea.
Thank you for that because you're absolutely right about difficulty in getting people to volunteer or volunteer even more hours and certainly the Planning and Development Department views this as a priority that needs to move forward and having you be a member of the implementation committee would certainly bring some continuity from the other areas of the POCD that may not be impacted by planning and zoning. But I do think it's important that prioritization occur with the aid and assistance and input of the implementation committee, not just planning and development staff.
Okay. So, anything more on this Ruthanne? We'll be good on this one.
I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you very much for all your hard work on this.
Of course.
So, Mike, are, are you ready for us under new business?
I think so. So, I've got something I just threw together. Let me see if I can share my screen so you can take a look at it and decide what you guys think. Can you see?
Yep. So, I don't want to formally introduce this item on the agenda so we can have a, a conversation about it. So, next up on our agenda under new businesses, item B, Shay's has fatality for special use application for sale of alcohol at 122 Prospect Hill Road. Okay. So, Julia and Mark, can you see the proposed motion for consideration also on the screen?
Yes, I can see it up to the third condition. So, I don't know if there's anything after the third condition.
That's it.
Okay.
Certainly, you, you, you and your client need to be comfortable with this before we act on it as well. So, here's your opportunity and, and be honest with you, if, if, if there's something here that you, that you just don't feel comfortable with, we're not obligated to take a formal vote tonight. If you prefer, we, we can wait to another meeting. If there's something here that doesn't sit right with you. So, just, just keep that in mind.
I appreciate that. If you, I'm gonna send him a message right now, but I, there's a, other than a small typo in number three, which might mean, mean to say the proposed use is in harmony with adjacent uses. Other than that, I have no issues with the conditions and the findings. Mark, do you want to talk to me offline for a minute?
I agree with everything.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any, the members of the commission, does anybody have any comments for Mike D'Amato, what he's crafted here?
Mike, Mike, are you, you okay with that little addition that she made or correction or whatever?
Yep, I, I just fixed it.
Yeah, I see it.
I, multitasking is not my strong suit. So, listening to your POCD discussion and writing this while muttering to myself.
So, just like we took an item off your plate for future agenda now and you have extra capacity at another meeting.
Yeah, we should just work, we should just do everything in the moment on the fly. We don't need to write.
No, 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 no. I, I thought this was simple enough and, and I heard that the client, you know, they want to open up in, in, in a couple of weeks. So, I thought that it was better to take care of this now than later.
We appreciate that certainly on our end. And thank you, Mr. D'Amato for putting this together so quickly.
Thank you.
So, if, if none of the members of the commission have any questions, I guess I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve application PZ 2021-03 Shay Hospitality Special Use Perm Application for the sale of alcohol at 122 Prospect Hill Road, MAP 112, Block 17, Lot 1A-1, which is a B2 zone. The approval is granted subject to conformance with the submitted application, supporting materials and public hearing presentation as may be modified by the commission and this approval and the following conditions and modifications. There are three findings and three conditions in the document drafted by Mike D'Amato and on the screen and presented here. Included here in.
There was a motion on the table for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Just as a formality, should he date the document?
I'm sure. So, there's a motion on the table with a dated document, February 23, 2021. Are there any other comments from the commission, questions? Here are none? A call for votes in favor say aye, raise their hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ananamous? Good luck to Julie and Mark. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The certificate of action, will that go to Mark directly or should I address that with Amanda?
I believe it will go to whoever is listed as the applicant on the application form, but we'll first run the notice of decision.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Have a good evening.
Okay, we're moving right along toward business meeting and this is where we we're having an additional discussion on zoning. You see Eric is with us, is Tim Kuhn, are you there?
Good evening.
Hi, Tim. Do we want town staff to kick off the conversation or do you want to lead, lead us in this discussion? How do you want to proceed?
Well, I'll just introduce this by saying I, I had a Zoom meeting with Clark and Mike late last week to discuss the potential, actually at that point in time, we were discussing language for a initially a text amendment. Based on our meeting at, or the last meeting, we were informally discussed how to proceed at Eric's parcel at 39 Prospect Hill Road. And they had gotten together and gone through the HIZ regulations and had some different ideas on, on how to proceed. So, we had a discussion and thought that perhaps we should run this by the commission to make sure we're, we're going in the right direction. So, just based on that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Clark and Mike and they can present their thoughts.
Okay, thank you.
I dug into it a little deeper. Not having as much history with the zone or experience with the zone and see that the commission approved a text amendment in January, I think it was January. it was January twenty-third of twenty eighteen, which looks like it changed it from a floating zone to an overlay zone. And Mike can certainly speak to this better than I can, but it's my understanding that an overlay zone keeps the underlying zones in place normally, and acts kind of as a secondary zone, and further restricts what can be done on that zone in that, on those various parcels. The, for instance, we always use is areas over an aquifer protection, you might want to have a second level of safeguards. So as I read through the text amendment from two thousand and eighteen, and some of the discussion in the minutes, I was a little confused, left confused by what the original intention was. It's clear that the commission at the time wanted to provide greater flexibilities to applicants. Again, my understanding of overlay zones is they don't really do that, so I wasn't even sure if it was just mischaracterized in how it was referenced. I was further intrigued by the decision in the Sophia's Plaza case versus East Windsor's Planning and Zoning Commission. While I may not agree with the judge's conclusion, I certainly couldn't help but know, he found the whole H I Z regulation to be very confusing and articulated, I believe, that it needed some work. I'm not aware that the Planning and Zoning Commission has really reviewed it formally since then, maybe have, and feel free to correct me if I'm wrong. So it seemed like a very good time to have the discussion to see how the commission felt about what was done in two thousand and eighteen, and whether you're comfortable with that as we look to find a solution that's in keeping with the discussion from the last meeting that the addition of a third drive-through would not be viewed unfavorably. And Mike, I don't know if you want to add to that?
Sorry, it seems to not want to unmute. Yeah, so I think that what Clark mentioned is correct, and, you know, we've been scratching our heads to figure out the most appropriate path forward, and it seems like some of the intent, the commission's intentions are not necessarily executed by the regulatory framework that is currently in place. You know, overlay zones versus development districts or floating zones, and this idea of the drive-throughs, one of the things, and I will admit that I was reviewing some case law on floating zones, I was, I kind of ducked off for a second, but one of the things that also is a little bit of an issue for me is that we have a zone right now, this H I Z zone, which basically consists of four parcels, two of which have uses that are not allowed by the H I Z. The drive-throughs and the church are both prohibited uses in the H I Z, yet they encompass half of the land within the H I Z at this point. And, you know, so when you have half of those uses that are non-conforming, it's just, you start to think that perhaps we need to adjust the way we handle that so that everything is a bit more appropriate and reflects the commission's intent. So, and maybe, you know, we can hear some feedback on what your thoughts are, but I think our takeaway is that what the commission wants, has wanted, and thought should be done, is not really supported by what is here. So what we really want to do is fix it so that what we, what I think you all think you did, is what's there, and the regulatory process of a traditional, you know, floating zone or is considered. And I guess I'll, getting back to Tim and the Prospect Hill property, spending more time adjusting the allowed uses and prohibited uses of a zone that isn't working, that's been changed, you know, here and there, and isn't necessarily reflective of the discussion that Clark outlined, didn't really make a lot of sense. So we didn't want to make it worse by having Tim proceed with a text amendment, when maybe we all think that we just need to fix the way the zone is set up as a whole. And I'll leave it there.
Are you suggesting that a course of action be create another zone to encompass the existing uses and planned uses in the future? Is that an option?
I, I think what we can do is get a sense from the commission how you want to handle the area that was identified in the original map as being part of the potential H I Z. And if the goal is to create a process by which in certain circumstances, uses are allowed greater flexibility, then we need to bring this zone back to a traditional floating zone and make it clear that the underlying uses remain based on the underlying zone if someone does not avail themselves to that regulation. The problem we have now is the underlying zone is completely in conflict with the H I Z for something like drive-throughs, because you have the B two, which allows them, and the H I Z, which prohibits them. So the conversations that Clark was reading through, where the previous town planner had mentioned that the underlying zones would be protected, and I think Tim presented that discussion in those minutes at his last presentation to you guys, isn't actually the case. And it creates this issue where the owner of the property now, who has two drive-throughs on the pad site, is totally non-conforming, and his best bet would be to just walk away from the H I Z, because it's not giving him any flexibility, which I don't believe was the commission's intent.
I think the only reason why we proceeded with the H I C regulations was in future consideration of the larger parcels to the north, where the cinema site. Is that correct?
Exactly. Yeah, exactly, Joe.
And perhaps we kind of get out of ahead of ourselves with that potential development that might have gone there, and thinking about that that potentially could, I don't want to use the word, redevelop that whole interchange between forty-four and forty-five?
Yep.
There was a consideration of maybe, you know, if the price was right, maybe existing owners would want to sell all their property to the highest bidder, if you will, and maybe do something a little different than what's already there? Maybe that was, was some of the thought was?
Exactly, that's exactly what I recall, Joe.
Joe, there was also a discussion, I think maybe this was the initial part of it, that the developer kind of had an option of either going by the underlying zone or applying the H I Z zone, if it allowed them more flexibility. Did that go away when it stopped being a floating zone?
Well, I think that's what Mike D'Amato was saying, I guess that, my understanding is that flexibility, which we thought was there, truly got in, not intentionally got eliminated. Is that, is that correct? Am I mischaracterizing that? You know, we thought that flexibility was going to be there for someone such as Eric's property, or the property he wants to develop, he would have that flexibility, but unintentionally, this is what happened.
Yeah, and so generally speaking, when you see these floating zones, the first step, because the floating zones allow for greater development potential, the first step is that they come into you and they land the zone using a concept plan. And if you agree that the concept plan is in keeping with your vision for the area and within the P O C D, then you approve that landing of the zone. And then by doing that, all of those new flexible components to the floating zone become available. But if what they want to do is not in keeping with your vision, then you don't allow them to land that zone, and that underlying zoning designation remains. So it gives you the flexibility to make sure that those folks that do make use of that additional development potential that you've identified, really have a tailored approach that you agree with, and you don't just give it to everybody, which is why it's floating. The only real other difference, the only other difference between floating and overlay is that a floating zone can be anywhere. Overlay zones are very specific in their location, but generally are more restrictive. So I understand this is complex and complicated, and there's been a lot of changes, and I think that per, you know, what Clark had mentioned, what we're just looking for is some general table-setting impressions from you folks, so we can look at everything and come back to you with some suggestions. Obviously, Tim and the property owner are here, and they want to move forward like they presented, but they don't want to do it in conflict with what you have as the overall vision, and run up against these regulatory barriers, because some things have been changed that don't reflect the commission's intent. So we kind of want to all be at the table and move in the same direction.
I'm just speaking for myself and just what I recall of the past meetings, that we were very sensitive to locations for drive-throughs, and we didn't want that everywhere within the zone. Where it is in and around the interchange was okay. So intensification of that would be okay, in my view, within zoning regulations, but I understand that that's not allowed now. But at the same time, personally, I wouldn't want to see that spread throughout the entire H I Z overlay zone. I wouldn't want to see that midpoint on Route Five, more and more drive-through. That was not the intent. Easy on, easy off the interstate for business. And we wanted to keep them in general, locate, general locations, not sprawling all across town. So if there's a way to restore some of that flexibility that we thought we had, I fully support that.
Can I say something, please?
Sure, go right ahead.
Our approach back when we did the zone change was with the understanding with the commission and the town planner, that the area most directly, most closest to the interchange and the highway would service the highway and would be, and the zone was to accommodate flexibility in terms of parking, signage, consolidated parcels, to give the town the ability to take advantage of this resource, which you're fortunate to have in that you have highway, you know, property, you have property that borders the highway, and it's isolated from the rest of your town, and it's a very positive thing to have that, because you can, you can have a lot of resources and services, but it's not going to affect the downtown or the other sections of the different subdivisions of your town. So this was done specifically, according to my understanding, to allow for drive-throughs and restaurants and different items, like even the bank of things, so that people could get in and get off the highway and take advantage of that property near the highway. So I don't know what happened in two thousand and eighteen, but it seems like, in my opinion, there was a reaction to the fact that your casino project was coming, and that the concern was for traffic and, 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 oh, you know, too much, you know, too much development in that section next to the casino. And then, so somehow, they took away the idea that we were talking about originally, the flexibility and the accommodation of the highway. So I'm, I'm coming back now, trying to restore what I thought I originally had. It's not something I'm trying to reestablish, you know, recreate or something. I just assumed, until I found out recently, and I was never made aware, that you guys sort of put, did away with the drive-through piece and the accommodation to the, you know, and that's, that's, that's all I'm trying to say, is that this is something I always thought I had when I bought the property and subdivided it, and now I'm looking to finish, and just try to finish my project. So that's where I'm coming from.
I guess my comment back would be, I think we support, and I'm speaking for myself, I support what you're trying to do. I think the question is how to best fix it. And so I think the question comes back to the town staff. How do we get our regs back to clear if it's very muddled?
So Mike or Clark, it's not as simple as going in, in modifying a zoning table to check and uncheck permitted uses. And I think it's not as simple, because if that were done, it would apply to the entire H I, the H I Z properties, where that zone, correct? And that could be applied anywhere, up and down between forty-four and forty-five, but we're just talking about the property near forty-four, not, not in between forty-four and forty-five. So you couldn't just simply make a text amendment, because it would apply to the entire overlay zone, not just specific properties within the overlay zone.
Well, I think that's, I cut Clark off, go for it.
I just wanted to add that you adopted the map at that meeting for the overlay zone, which actually goes all the way up to the end field line. I realize that's not that much further up Route Five, but it does go that far north.
Oh, okay.
The only, the only thing that I would add is that because the area that's been identified is subject to potentially becoming part of the, what was envisioned to be this, this new zone. So they're not all, all those parcels are not immediately eligible for that, any of those changes, they would still have to come to you for some type of approval, likely more than one, if you allowed within the H I Z any number of things, because right now they're still B one or B two. So you still have control over allowing those uses which are listed in the H I Z at any of those other parcels, because they have to come to you for something. Right now, because it's not really an overlay, they're coming to you for just a standard zone change. But the bigger issue that we have to really address is the compatibility between the underlying zone and whatever it is that we call this and how we deal with it, so that we don't have parcels that are near to each other, but because maybe one or two other properties here and there get developed under the H I Z, you could have properties next to each other that are, you know, of your prohibited use, and then an allowed use in the H I Z, and then another prohibited use, so there would be no continuity. So we'll, we will try to come up with what we think is the simplest approach to that without allowing everything to go basically from one, you know, from that exit north.
Mike, you had your hand, Mike Kozowski, you had your hand up there for a bit?
Yeah, I mean, could, could the solution be that if the applicant does not want the coverage of the H I Z, which was supposed to be more inclusive, that they could apply for a zoning change to go back to just a B two zone?
We actually did discuss that with Mike. My only fear about doing that is, is that there are, there is still some flexibility that the H I Z brings to this parcel, for example, the consolidation of a parcel, the consolidated parking, the signage itself is something you're only going to find, you know, to allow in this H I Z zone. So my fear is, is if we change it back to B one or B two, where drive-throughs are allowed, do we lose the flexibility with our signage and the other advantages of being in the H I C?
I guess that would have to go by your development plan. So you go by what your development plan, what you're looking to accomplish, and see if you can accomplish everything you want under a B two zone.
Well, I think right off the bat, I don't think that's going to be possible. Well, I think right off the bat, I don't think that's going to be possible because they're going to require, if that were the case, they're going to have to have their own exclusive driveway. Access to that one property.
Right.
They're going to need their own driveway to this property and that's not what we want. We want to share and combine driveways and that's only possible. Through this H I Z zone. So they can't live alone in the B one or B two world. Did I, did I say that correctly? May as eloquently as a planner would, but.
No, I think that's accurate, yeah.
And you don't want your own driveway and I don't think we would want to grant you your own driveway. We want to share driveway, shared access, excuse me.
So what about if just we added the use of drive throughs as a special use permit? Under the H I Z zone. And then you have the flexibility to decide where it's appropriate and where it's not.
Which that would bring us back to essentially a text amendment to to add drive throughs back into that zone. Everything in the H I Z is special permit anyway. So you you would be, you know, you still have that authority over any application that comes in. And there's also, I believe in the H I Z regulations, statements about. They have to demonstrate that they're not creating traffic issues. So that could be used in conjunction with a special permit. To potentially shut down a drive through in a location where you didn't think it was appropriate.
I mean, is that is that our most straightforward approach?
It seems to be that, in my opinion, and that would be, but I I would have a hard time saying no. Let's take, for example, in that property down by on Bridge Street. Part of the zone touches down to Bridge Street with the parking lot for the old showcase cinemas is, there's a driveway already out there. Let's take, for example, an applicant wants to put a drive through right there. You know. They would have to make some sort of overwhelming argument to prove that that would work. I just don't want to be put in that type of position, that's all. But there may not be any other way other than as Tim suggested, the the text amendment allowed anywhere in the zone. Under a special use permit and let them build their own case.
If I could, one of the things that we did talk about and I I won't speak for Tim, but but he. He properly and and, you know, I appreciate his his willingness to point out the fact that that perhaps they're. Because if you if you think back to our previous meeting, one of the things we talked about was allowing them as an accessory use. Which makes it a little bit easier because now there's a, it's inherently tied to something else, which gives you more control. He identified that that it may not be the case with the way certain models of operation are are kind of trending. You may not have really a bona fide seating area. So we drive through wouldn't really. Go as an accessory use. And what, you know, we're kind of discussing the text amendment and removing, you know. Removing the drive throughs from the reg. But if the commission had a lot of discussion about. Including those prohibited uses in twenty eighteen, he's essentially from a regulatory perspective, he's asking to. Dial all that conversation back and he's asking you to not think about all those conversations which were appropriate at the time. And so we were just concerned about kind of what that would involve and and how you would you would feel about it. But if you think that it's the appropriate path forward, then it's it's an option.
Doesn't zoning go with ebb and flow, you know, and we need to be flexible for zoning. I mean, this is what we have now. This is our reality. I understand, you know, what happened in the past, it's great. You got to keep that in the back of your mind. It can help inform the future, but it doesn't. You're not committed to what what your feelings were four years ago. I understand it's part of record and people do bring that up.
Well, last meeting, we also discussed the possibility of making it allowable. Where it, there's an existing traffic signal. I mean, that would only allow it now. There's what, three in that entire H I Z zone? It would really restrict the amount of possible sites.
Actually, there's only two.
If we go all the way.
Oh, no, I I apologize. You were right. I forgot about one.
So I mean, I I think that would probably, you know, give us what we wanted to, you know, have a. A much tighter hold on where this, where these can go and not and not cause, you know, the traffic concerns. Is there, is there a way to wordsmith that into the regulation?
That access only be allowed to a an existing shared, existing shared driveway that's signalized? Or common driveway that's signalized?
Yeah.
We, we may have to learn a new dance to get it done, but we will do our best to figure it out. That there I, there will be some type of perform performance standards or criteria, you know, a site suitability. Site suitability where if you check these boxes, you know, then it's deemed to be appropriate and we'll have to set a bunch of qualifying criteria. We don't want to make it so clear that we're just doing all of this work so that it only allows on one parcel. So Clark and I will come up with some potential performance standards surrounding sort of that goal.
But just listening from the discussion, I happen to heard. One comment to the negative and saying, you know, what we did. In twenty eighteen was intentional and we had no, no, I I haven't heard any of that. So I, which 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 is good, good news for Eric and his team that it looks like we're. We're in a position to try to fix some unintended consequences.
I appreciate your flexibility. I appreciate your willingness. I think it's more semantics and just logistics and language. To me, I'm I'm listening and we, nobody, I don't know if there's a perfect solution, but I. We're we're on the same page trying to accomplish the same thing, which is encouraging to me and I do appreciate that. I understand that. It's just. I I don't have the planning wherewithal to make make the create, you know, craft the language either. So I'm I'm confident that. Mike and Clark can craft language that, you know, represents how the commission feels and will be compatible with what I want to do. I I I. I feel that, you know, right from both conversations. So I'm, I'm good to just let them do that if if it's the light or whatever you guys decide. It works for me either way. So I'm okay with, I'm good. I I do appreciate the the input and the amount of time you guys are putting into it. So thank you.
So Tim, do you have what you need from us? Confirmation that you you should continue to work for to satisfy your goals, meet your goals?
Yeah, I I think it's it's come to light that text amendments the way to go with some some additional language. To to tie tie some performance standards to the drive through use. Which again, I can, I'm perfectly happy to work with with Clark and and Mike to come up with the language necessary. So. That sounds like.
Are you folks at liberty not to say the the intended use, but where in the parcel? So right now there's a driveway that kind of, you go to the end, you make a sharp left, you go to the bank.
Yeah.
So is it straight ahead?
It would be, yeah, the access to the place, it would be straight ahead and then we would kind of take a left. To go through the parcel and then come back out to the to the road that kind of goes in between the the bank and the Taco Bell. So yeah, the entrance is kind of straight ahead. Yeah.
Okay. Now, isn't there a utility easement through there? The high power, high tension power lines or that you just, you're not in there?
That's further in the back where the attention basin is. Yeah.
All right. Okay, just curious.
Okay, so I appreciate your time and your effort and Mike and Clark will be in touch again.
Thank you to the commission. You have given us clear direction on which way to head. So. That's what we were hoping for and we appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Clark or Mike the motto, do you have anything else under the the business meeting you want to discuss? I know I skipped over correspondence, but I didn't see anything listed.
No, I have nothing.
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. And how does our agenda look for next? Next meeting, it looks like we took, we took in an application for nail salon. So it looks like, I don't know if we're going to be ready for that one. And we've been kicking the can down the road for this one ninety-eight South Main Street for about a month now. We'll probably see that one. Do we have anything else up, Burling, to your knowledge?
Yeah, we have the text amendment for the Noble Gas Station. We couldn't put it on tonight's agenda because it needed the thirty days because of the CROG referral.
Okay. All right. And you know, at some point, we really very very serious about what Ruth Ann presented. You know, even if if it's part of a half an agenda, we we dedicate toward. Sitting down with specific tasks or to do items regarding the P O C D. Or start talking about rewrites of regs. I think, like you said, you have a long laundry list of things that. In addition to the things we've been talking about tonight, that really could use some tweaking.
Yep.
So when when the time is right, we we certainly would in love to have those opportunities to work with town staff to kind of. Take care of some of those things.
What I can do. And not wanting to get myself out into the deep end of the pool to then be be late for the next meeting, but what I can do is try to. As you said, put pen to paper and we can try to get to sort of a list or an outline of what we've identified as some of the regulatory tweaks that. We, the commission has talked about or that we've run into. Over the last six months or so, can't believe I've been here six months. And you guys can look at them and and see what you think is most important and then we can start to prioritize. Between, so between that, between the warehouse point, planning study, the P O C D. Got a lot cooking.
Clark, you joined us at the perfect time. We're going to keep you busy.
Oh, that's been true for the last month for sure.
Well, does anyone else have anything for the good of the order? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Everyone have a great weekend. See everyone in two weeks. Yep, I know.
Thank you. Take care.